Good morning, everybody. Today is Monday, November 14th, 2016. I'm calling Potter County Commissioners Court. Today we have Mike Martin from South Georgia State Department of Sports. You can worry me. So if you'll please stand in your next area.
Heavenly Father, thank you for being in this place. Father, today we are faced with big decisions. We're faced with varying kinds of conflicts and troubles and difficulties. And we pray, Father, for wisdom. We pray, Father, for unity. We pray, Father, that you would guide and direct and that you would be glorified in our community. We thank you for Jesus, and it's in his name we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States of Texas, one state and one God, one and indivisible.
Okay, number one is recognition of minutes from October 24th, 2016. Here's the question that's already cast. Two budget amendments to consider and then on the approval of budget amendments for 2016, 2017 fiscal year. Carrie, I don't understand the transfer.
I see the description from unit salaries and expenses to cover that from general funds. Is that expected? Is this an individual item or is there something unusual to share?
A couple of years ago, they paid for the mortgages or the gambling to change. Previously, they all came through the district board, maybe even money in to the local mortgage fund. But now everything except the property that we can sell was due to the federal account. If we don't pay salaries, I would feel like I'm not going to pay. So we quit the so graceful to trade salaries. We put the issue.
Okay, thank you. I make a motion that we approve the budget amendments for the 2016, 2017 fiscal years presented.
I have a motion in second on the favor of Judge Ryan. Carrie, can you turn the microphone, please? All right, vouchers to consider and act upon the approval of the payment of vouchers. Process out of the county attorney's office for the period of October 20th, 2016. Three number 19th, 2016, check numbers 171-538 through 171-993. And wire transfers 802 through 812 in the amount of $2,906,788 and 0 cents. Any questions?
I approve the action as presented.
Second for discussion, I have one quick question, Judge. Carrie, page 10 of 53, check number 171-679, planes builder, roughly $35,000. Shergrams Bill Cody covered area. Is this our last payment under the regular?
We are.
Okay. Chad, is there an update on the contracts, the revised contract that I had requested a couple of months ago for us to start kind of looking at that draft? As a part of this agreement, if I remember correctly, they are to now take over their own property insurance.
I think last time before you met, you talked to Pricehead Expos, Chelsea, they were sort of preparing the amendment to place.
Are we taking the lead on whether they?
That's a good question.
Hence the reason I asked the question.
And they were to split the cost with y'all, but they didn't.
And they have to reimburse us for that.
So Chad, would it be appropriate to have this on as a next agenda item, at least for an update, if we don't have an actual contract or a revision kind of in place?
Yes, I'm noting that. I don't recall when the insurance renews. I think it's. So my question during the amendment would be, do we want to carry the coverage as it is through renewal date? Or make that change and have them seek some sort of reimbursement?
The way I understood the agreement at that time was when we were done with the project, they would take over the actions and I'll look to.
Okay, I'll submit it that way and discuss it.
Carrie, is that your request?
So just assume I'll go through another pill season.
It's a good point. And by the way, Chad, you know that third church been needed in July?
I know my.
Yes.
Since my.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's July, we just did it. Do you know when mine does?
I wish I could help you with that.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so we have a motion in second on the favor of vouchers, Judge Ryan. Okay, insurance item. Should we announce the insurance report? Is there anything new we want to discuss, Carrie? No, we don't. Okay, that sounds good.
Thank you.
So recognized. Number five is the home care and hospice month. To consider and act upon our proclamation declaring November 2016 is home care and hospice month. I'm assuming Ms. Arba Law, is that you?
No.
No?
I'm Edie Reynolds.
Okay, Edie Reynolds, okay. She asked me to go ahead and read this as one more page, so. Whereas home care services provide high-quality and compassionate healthcare services to those in need, especially at times of community or personal healthcare crisis. And whereas home care is the most preferred method of healthcare delivery among disabled, elderly, chronic illness individuals eager to live independently in their own homes as long as they possibly can. And whereas home care in Texas is a growing alternative to hospitalization or other intuition-based, institution-based form of healthcare for chronic illnesses, providing care to hundreds of thousands of Texans each year. And whereas the Texas Association for Home Care and Hospice and home care and hospice providers in Texas have declared November 2016 as home care and hospice month. The theme of the care you need in the home you love. And I'm calling on all Texans to assert this occasion with appropriate ceremonies and activities. Now therefore, we, by the county commissioners' court, do hereby proclaim November 2016 as home care and hospice month and encourage the support and participation of all citizens in learning more about the home care and hospice philosophy of care for the elderly, disabled, and the terminally ill. And with this word, I may add, here is who said my name and God says, "So to fix, they've afforded the day of November 2016." Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think everybody in this room knows someone in their life who has gone through something like this. Our people soon will be this, so I think this is very important. I am signing this. Just get your two questions.
Yes, you'll do.
I approve the home care and hospice month proposition.
Number six, Potter County Memorial Stadium sublease. To consider and act upon the approval of the sublease of Potter County Memorial Stadium. Andrew Dunn is here to talk about this. Andrew, you want to come up? Andrew, if you don't mind saying your name, address, or birthday, please.
Andrew Dunn, 4015, Turnberry Circle, Houston, Texas. I'm here to discuss baseball in Amarillo. My name is Andrew Dunn. I want to operate the Pickos League. The Pickos League is an independent professional baseball league with 10 teams in California, Arizona, New Mexico, Texas, and Kansas. League was founded in 2010. We've had 2,100 players play in the league since then to have made it to the major leagues. We have executed and agreed to a sublease with Southern Independent Baseball from the Metroplex to sublease the stadium, May, June, July. We keep independent professional baseball in Potter County. Our team will be a full-time Amarillo team and play a full schedule in our league. In addition to the Pickos League subleasing the stadium, the group in the Metroplex Southern Independent Baseball is subleasing in the spring to San Jacinto Christian Academy. From January to May, they lost their field and they will be playing or in the process of playing their schedule in Potter County Stadium. Between our organizations, we feel we can get Potter County back on track to the condition it needs to be in. I feel Amarillo is a great city for the Pickos League for a lot of reasons. It's an historic baseball town. Geographically, it's close to Garden City, Santa Fe, Alpine, Roswell, Trinidad, which is all places we have teams. I have no affiliation with any other team or organization that has been here in the past. We've played every year here in spring training, opening games, and we're a total independent organization from anyone that's been here and played here before. So that's what I'm here for and answer any questions or whatever it is.
Judge, I do have a little background. I have been speaking with Mr. Ellison, so I can certainly use this time to inform the court. Normally around this time every year, one of the items that we have contractually are the improvements that need to happen on that stadium. So at the end of the fiscal year, we have kind of a little small working committee that includes our county auditor, legal counsel, facilities director, and we get the improvements that are submitted and we kind of work through that, similar to what we did last year and say, are these improvements or are these just maintenance? If we think that's great or could go up for debate, either way, we bring to the full commissioners' court to debate that. So from a timeline perspective, I have been speaking with Mr. Ellison. We've tried to put something on the calendar every couple of weeks just to touch base on where we are. They no longer have their existing general manager. And so one of the logistical things we were working on is to get the keys back to the facility. That's an item that's still open. And we also do not have the documented improvements. We communicated that to him earlier in the year. He said, you know, the improvements are coming up, so get ready for that. We actually provided a date through the end of October, October 31st, to just kind of have that in and we'll start to reconvene as a committee. You will see in your backup, your packet for commissioners' court, that we did get an item submitted and it is listed, Potter County improvements. But I want to be very clear that none of this has been at all verified. This just came through late last week. And I think Judge Tanner and certainly I have put everything in here, so you have all the information of the open questions. None of this has been verified. We typically ask for invoices to have for our documentation. So I just want to be very clear that the improvements are still very much an open item on Mr. Ellison's contract. His contract runs through September 30th of 2017, but we're trying to get these year improvements settled. Just so you kind of know the dollar of what we're trying to settle, when Ms. Tucker, who I know is in the audience with us today, was the general manager, you'll recall this time last year, she really did over and above on her improvements. The first year on the contract, they were only required to make $68,000 in the improvements. And again, we made that contract change so they don't pay us any dollars. It's the improvements that occur as a result of the agreement. $68,000 was the first year, but she certainly went above that. So Carrie, keep me honest on these numbers. But what I have, what's due and owed for this year that we're trying to settle is roughly $12,181 and a little change, 82 cents. So that's the dollar amount we're trying to settle. This time last year, it was the $68,000. We were trying to get all that documentation. So this is what's left for this year to close that out. So the improvements are very much still an open question. Mr. Ellison, I have requested, certainly by Judge Tanner's request as well, for him to be present since he is currently the contract holder. He indicated he could not today, and if the court felt we needed to pass this until we could, he would be present at the next couple of court sessions for full agenda. So I wanted to report about the improvements. You also have in your packet an item that Ms. Tucker presented, which is an email expressing concern about some payables that are due. And I'll look to Scott to keep me honest here because the court, this is not in our purview. This is their business entity to business entity. So this is not in our purview to decide. But I wanted to make sure you have all the information that we have been presented with about some payables, and Mr. Ellison is aware of that. I've made a call to him to let him know that certainly this is all presented in the court and I expect there to be eye to eye participation, because none of this would be a surprise to him. So the improvements I wanted to mention, Ms. Tucker's email. A small thing, and Mike, I'll look at you to keep me honest there. I was trying to get all of my items together to make sure the court was aware of everything. We did get a citation on the property about the weeds being overgrown was corrected, but we did get a citation from the city. So, you know, that's kind of, it's a smaller item thing, but I just want to make sure the full court knows that. That is my update.
I have a question. There's some equipment that's in the facility that is not owned by anybody that's at the ballpark of some gentleman out of Chicago. Didn't like to get his equipment back or might as he be willing to sell it. But right now, that equipment belongs to another person.
He's been waiting for over a year and I thought this had been settled. He's been getting tax, I know, there's nothing to do with you. He's been getting tax bills on this and he doesn't have. He can't get it. It's a blue bonnet concession. And he can't get it. No one will let him in to get it and he's paying taxes on it, so he's not happy. So we got a lot of trouble talking about this.
Well, the thing from the timeline, I have 10 cities, so our schedule. And I came to commissioners' court in 2010 as well. And at the time, you guys elected to award the lease to this group and here we are. But our schedule, our schedule, we have 10 other cities. I don't know our timeline and I also don't know that with Mr. Ellison. I don't know Mr. Ellison at all, but from my talks with him, I don't know that he would come here. For, I mean, I don't know what you're talking for. Yeah, so I don't know when and if he'd come here in the future, the fact that he doesn't have a team going forward. So I don't know. I don't know how that's going to stand, but yeah, that's things to consider.
I couldn't, my biggest question is why is Ellison still involved at all with the lease? If he's backing out of the teams and having gone to some of the games last year and seen the field. But we spent $42,000, I think, on a concession stand and they served whole dog dogs and the Frito pies. I don't think we got our investment back at all.
At the end of the season, the lead office contacted us and asked us, you know, what our interest would be in going to Joplin and Amarillo. And then they put us in touch with him and he executed a sublease. So I don't know. That's not something I can answer.
Yeah, it's nothing.
Right? Sure.
Far as I'm concerned, you could have. It, my biggest concern is what, why is he still involved? He shouldn't be. I don't think he should be involved at all. And if we think he's defaulted on the lease, I think we can say, lease is open. Lease it to someone else.
Typically, he hasn't defaulted, so to speak, because he is the leasing. But he leased it out to the ball team and to the people who were running it. And they, they are basically cannot come through.
That's his responsibility.
Well, and Judge Tanner, I'll also mention, I mean, certainly we're excited about anything that could happen in that stadium. I mean, we know as a commissioners' court, we will have to entertain a decision on what will happen with that property. So I think certainly don't take these contractual concerns to mistake that we're excited about something that could go in there. One thing to make a note on the sublease is that part of the agreement between Pecos, at least the draft that we have in front of us, is that they would exchange $25,000 of improvements. So that would leave kind of $25,000 under Mr. Ellison's purview.
Well, it's split between the high school and our 50-50 tenants.
And we don't, we don't have a draft of anything from the high school.
I'm unaware of that. I don't know what you have.
Yeah, we all, we just got the draft and there've been some questions a little bit on the term with just years. And so I know there's been discussions as well for San Jacinto, which certainly, back to commissioners' church point, I think we're excited about anything that could be in there. We don't have a draft. There was a little concern even last week because I've heard that there's a website up and running and it has Potter County's logo. So I think the biggest concern was that someone could actually purchase the ticket without a lease being in effect that the commissioners' court has the authority to do. So I would just, for what it's worth, you know, just cause, state a little caution because I think there's a few missteps from a public perception.
Sure.
And we certainly don't want the public to be able to purchase tickets when indeed there is not an agreement in place. So that's just more of a caution.
Right. When I executed the sublease from him, I guess maybe he was under the interpretation of go forward. I didn't, I didn't, that was where there's confusion. So we, no, no, no way wanted to mislead anyone. There's a team, nor do we need to do it. We have 10 teams who've never sold tickets if, so that's.
And Scott, keep me honest here on the contract because I think there's a little, a couple of terms here that I just want to make sure that I'm clear about. Andrew mentioned executed and agreed upon lease between me and Mr. Ellison, but this commissioners' court has the authority for the sublease. There is no sublease in agreement until it comes to the commissioners.
That's correct. If any sublease under the terms of the original lease agreement has to be approved by the commissioners.
That was obviously where there's a point of confusion because from my understanding in our league, when we have a lease, we move forward. We have a lease, we move forward. We didn't, you know, miss quietly by launching a website or whatever. That's part of our work in baseball. We get our schedules ready for the other teams. So that's been removed and things, you know, the logo was removed and, you know, the boots everywhere. So it is what it is and definitely we're getting off the wrong foot all the way around and we want to just get things correct to move forward, so.
I would suggest, Judge, and entertain that we maybe hold this item until Mr. Ellison is present and we can address these contracted items directly with him.
The necessary. Do we know if any of these improvements that are listed? I've never seen.
Do you like, Mike's not, just the best. Want to take a look at the timeline? Steffi, do you want to say anything today?
No.
Is there anybody else who would like to say anything in public here that wants to speak on this matter?
Andrew, we appreciate you being here this morning. Hopefully we get something done.
So we're just going to wait for two weeks and see if we can get anything here. I would suggest that.
If he doesn't make it, we're going to agree.
Chad, did you have something?
Well, to be clear, the sublease does not release the original receipt.
Okay, so we still want it?
That's correct. That's correct. So that's, that's why Ellison is required to remain with the law because they remain viable on their commitment. This sublease is not effective.
Let's pass it for two weeks and see what happens here. And I'll give the call to you on the details. Andrew, thank you for coming at this. All right, number seven, tiers number two to receive or be built in the city of Amarillo. We are at tiers number two and consider an act upon Potter County's participation in tiers. City of Amarillo.
Judges, commissioners, thank you for allowing us to come and to brief you on the creation of the secondary tiers in the city of Amarillo. The tiers is located on East I-40, basically between Lakeside and Eastern, Northern side of I-40. The primary purpose for creating the tiers is to capture development and incremental tax increase to fund a multi-court athletic facility to be used by our Parks and Recreation Department and to promote tournaments into the community, which is an economic development driving force. This is an important project to the community and we want to brief you on the particulars related to this. Be able to answer any questions with a subsequent request that you participate in the tiers in terms of increment as well as having representation on the Board of Directors. I'm going to call on Deputy City Manager Bob Cowell, who has been the team leader for developing this tiers, to come and make a presentation to the commissioners' court. I have a 10 a.m. meeting involving some of my elected officials. So the discussion goes beyond that point. I'll need to excuse myself. It doesn't say that we're not lively interested in this project. The, so I'm going to call on Bob Cowell to present this to you. Would love to answer any questions or additional information as a result of making this request to the commissioners' court. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you, thank you for the opportunity. I think, I think you'll have copies, hopefully, of the presentation. And I've got, I've got a couple more as well here if anyone wants, wants those. Thank you, David, for the opportunity to present the information. I'll be very brief. I know some of you have been familiar with going through the tax and community reinvestment zone process previously with the city. And ultimately, what we're hoping to secure from the county, from the Pan Am Roundwater Entertainment District and Amarillo College is participation in tiers number two, equivalent to what we received in participation in tiers number one. Just by way of comparison, tiers number one, in roughly the 10 years that we've had a partnership with those same entities, has added about $52 million worth of value into our community. So by most measures, we consider that, and hopefully you all do here as well. Tiers number one, a great success. And it's 10 years into its 30-year life. And just as a reminder, participation by the county in that tiers is for 30 years at 100% of the increment. And ultimately, that's what we're hoping to be able to secure as we go forward with tiers number one as well.
Bob, can I ask a question there? If I made the $52 million, the increase in tiers number one, I'm assuming that's total, total project scope? Or is that the dollar amount that will then be taxable to Potter County? Because there's certainly quite a few government tax facilities.
That's the, that's the value of the construction. And actually, that does not currently include the free projects that are under construction. So those are the, it was $140 million base and as of last year, we're at $192 million of taxable value. That's always what that, what that covers. So yes, there's actually quite a bit more development beyond that as well. Those pieces are tackled. Good, good question. Basically, this tier, as Terry indicated, is about 900 acres between Lakeside or the Loop and Eastern and then up to Third and then I-40, North by 40. Most of the area is currently vacant. Most of it is currently underserved by utilities. And so I always have to add my little asterisk to what Terry's comments are in that. Terry is correct. One of the significant benefits of going through this tax and community reinvestment zone process will yield this athletic facility that we discussed. I'll talk a little bit about what the plans are in terms of what that is and the financing of it. But the primary, at least initial reason to do the tiers is actually to secure funds to actually reimburse the city for the extension of utilities that need to go in the area. Utilities that either are not typically the responsibility of the city or are the responsibility of the city but need to come online faster than they might otherwise do. Those would include things like extension of water and wastewater facilities as well as dealing with drainage and streets. All of those would be public facilities and again, would be items that we would typically construct in the area for development, but that typically might take 10, 15, 20 years to do. In this case, we're trying to construct as many of those as we can in the first five to 10 years of the project. And so setting up a mechanism by which we can actually ensure that we get those dollars back and we're going to do that is a key part of it. And then, of course, the ability to actually generate enough cash flow to be able to serve as a debt payment associated with the athletic facility. Right now, the assumptions that we're working under, and I had to be careful when I presented this to counsel to make sure everybody understood, these are assumptions. This is just a financial model. We, there are only a couple of things we're assured of through this process. But the model right now is assuming about $100 million worth of investment over those next 30 years. Ideally, the majority of which is coming from the first 10 years. That $100 million worth of investment yields enough money to be able to support about $10 million worth of infrastructure improvements in the area. We probably have somewhere around $15 million, if not more, of infrastructure improvements. But the tiers itself could support about $10 million of those. And it would have enough dollars to support about a $12 to $15 million recreation facility. And it would have enough dollars to put about $2 million roughly into what I'm referring to as kind of aesthetic improvements. Those would be improvements at kind of the gateway. So if you imagine where the Loop and I-40 are, those, those could go into things like landscaping or better signage or lighting or what have you. So if you imagine where the Loop and I forty are, those, those could go into, um, things like landscaping or better than signage or lighting or what have you, um, throughout the district to kind of give it a little bit more identity than perhaps it has currently. So that hundred million dollars worth of investment would yield that type of, those types of projects, um, as we move, move forward.
Bob, can I ask a question? The, the ten million of infrastructure improvements, can you give a few examples of what you expect?
Yeah, but most of that are, uh, street extensions and, um, water and wastewater and then drainage again. Drainage is probably the most expensive improvement in the area. It's a very, very flat piece of property. And under city code, while the developer is responsible for managing stormwater inside their project, once they get it to a city street, then the city actually is responsible for managing it beyond that. And typically we're spending somewhere between a million and two million dollars a mile to be able to manage that kind of stormwater. And so that's a significant, uh, cost. And I would say streets is the, are the second most extensive, uh, cost in there. And those would be extensions of streets like Whittaker through the area, as well as a couple of the other streets, to try to create some internal circulation so that there's some relief on the orange road in that area. Um, the, uh, the way that we've got the pro forma built is the, um, the model has it such that there would be some initial increment. This is the only thing that we have some assurance of right now, which is there are two hotels under construction currently. With our adoption of the tiers in November of this year, when those hotels come on the tax rolls, that increment will be captured based on what are the participating levels are. So that's basically the only dollars we know for certain we'd be coming into the tiers. Everything else of that, after that is obviously speculative based in, in the model. But the idea is if the, um, the first increments, so for example, if the Big Texan restaurant relocates to this, to this area and, um, builds a new restaurant as is proposed, then, and that would happen in the first couple of years. And if, for example, the RV park is relocated and reconstructed and that happens within the first couple of years, then those values would get captured early in the process. Based on the model, we think somewhere around year four or five, there would be enough cash flow kind of off of the property to sustain the debt necessary to actually construct the athletic facility. We need about a million dollars, just shy, just shy of a million dollars worth of tax revenue each year to be able to sustain that fifteen million dollars worth of, of debt over the rest of the, um, of the life of the tiers. Now, obviously, the way we're proposing it, the way we proposed it to council is that we would not issue that debt until that cash flow was sufficient to sustain it. So, um, again, our model right now is setting year four to five. Um, if development goes faster, that could be year two or three. If development goes slower, that could be year seven, eight, nine, or ten. Um, the key piece of getting the athletic facility in obviously is meeting a, a need in the community, um, for those types of facilities. But as, as Terry mentioned, it also generates the opportunity to be able to host tournaments. And hosting of those tournaments in turn will bring folks closer to where the restaurants are that are located in that area and hopefully the hotels as well, which in turn stimulates additional economic growth. So that's, that's why some economic growth will generate enough dollars to actually construct the facility. The construction and operation of the facility itself will generate additional economic activity, which will generate additional revenues that is the plan with it. But again, um, right now, our plan is not to proceed until we can actually cash flow that. We know in advance, um, funded without some assurance that we know those, those dollars are coming forward. Um, the council.
Bob, I, you may, as soon as I'm asking this question, I think you're getting ready to say this. I know this has already had a couple of initial question points at the council. What has the general feel?
Yeah, the council, it actually was exactly where I was going to go, so thank you. Um, the, the council actually had a series of first executive sessions ultimately because of the incentives involved. And then, um, had a couple of workshops and then two public hearings. And then ultimately on, last week, actually on November eighth, they have their second reading approved the establishment of the tax incremental reinvestment zone. Um, so what, and it's been all very positive, was a unanimous decision by, by the council. What that means is what the council has done is they have identified the boundaries of the tiers. They have established a name, which is the East Gateway Tiers Number Two. It's number two, of course, because we already have one in the top of the tiers. They have a, um, established a fund. The fund basically is, meaning that's where the dollars that are collected by whomever participates, um, goes into, into those funds. And they established the, uh, the board. It's a nine-member board and by statute, there are members from each of the taxing, the local taxing entities, um, except for the city. So Amarillo College, Panhandle Groundwater Conservation District, Potter County, and AISD are participating members, just as we have on, uh, tiers number one. Unless, of course, any of those entities wish to forego participation. And no one has in tiers number one, but say for example that Amarillo Independent School District didn't want to participate, then they would not, not, they would not nominate a board member, in which case then the council would have another appointment. So that would take up four of those appointments. The other five are city council, uh, appointments. So those four are actually appointed by those bodies, just as you do for tiers number one. Um, the other five will come from the city council. The main, uh, impact, there are two impacts with that action taken by the, the council. The first was, again, it, it establishes the base value, which is roughly forty-three, uh, forty-three million, five hundred and sixty thousand dollars out in that area. The reason that's important is any growth, whether that's growth due to, um, reassessment or new development, now will be, um, built upon that forty-three million. So that's now established by the action the council took. The second prior, uh, second important thing that allowed us to do is to, to do this, to come to you all. Um, next week I'll be presenting to AISD and then later this month we'll be presenting to, um, Amarillo College Board Trustees. And then next month, the Panhandle Groundwater Conservation District. And again, the purpose for these meetings is to kind of help explain and answer questions about the tiers, as well as to, um, request your participation in the tax incremental reinvestment zone at the same levels that you participated in tiers number one. So that, that is my kind of overview, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Is it by statute that, uh, the school district does not participate financially?
Yes, the Texas, early on in the establishment of tiers really across the country, school districts were a primary participant. And the main reason is they brought the most dollars, obviously. Um, most states in Texas certainly isn't one of those shifted away from that long ago to where they actually no longer are able to participate. They have a spot on the board, but they're no longer able to financially participate in the increments. The advantage to the school districts of that is if we realize that a hundred million dollars worth of investment, the portion of their tax revenue that's being presumably created by virtue of this tiers existing, they get. So they'll pass on through the school district. The rest of the participating entities won't realize that until thirty years, until when the, uh, tiers expire. But, uh, yes, that is statutorily controlled.
Pardon, Andy, as is, in tiers one is the largest financial support. And so I think that's something.
Yeah, I did.
Hopefully you all understand that.
Yeah, just to, to give some numbers behind that, um, because I know the, uh, inside the preliminary, um, project financing plan, there's no way it can be possible to read the chart that's in there. So I know I sent another slightly enlarged version, but if I did, my mind, I'm correct. And again, this is based off of that model. If we got a hundred million dollars worth of development and we saw the increment realized over a thirty-year period, that represents about eighteen million dollars worth of, of revenue coming from Potter County. And it's about ten million dollars coming from the city of Amarillo. So together, we're the two largest contributors to that, um, to that reinvestment zone.
That's a thirty-year period.
That's great, that's great.
Judge, I'll add a couple of comments here. I know that we have the Lee family in the audience, which is certainly incremental to, instrumental to this establishment. So obviously no surprise, it's quite exciting for a hundred million dollars of development to be on the table for Potter County. So that in and of itself, kind of enough said at that point. But I've been working with the Lee family over the year, as I heard in the community about this type of development. So I certainly don't want to put Bobby on the spot, but if you would like to say something, please feel free to do so. I wanted to share a little bit of the context of what I understand will go in this East Gate, um, tier zone. And I think all of this is, still may shift a little bit, so nothing is really set in stone. But there are discussions regarding, um, obviously the Big Texan move, kind of being the pioneer, um, shift for that area. Also discussions around new hotels, restaurants, this athletic facility, hockey, football, you name it. Everything's kind of been on the table because of the footprint of this land. So I think that's quite exciting. You know, we ran into a few bumps at the beginning of the first tiers because the land was landlocked, obviously, and we had to move the tenants. Um, I don't expect that to be the case in this East Gate tiers. Uh, but I know there's been a lot of dialogue and discussion of what this could be. I think the great thing is that there are still quite a few things on the table of what it could ultimately turn into. But the most exciting part that I feel like for Potter County and the taxpayers is in thirty years, this will be taxable, taxable private dollars that then the taxpayers could profit from. Um, and no surprise, a part of town that, quite honestly, I don't know that I'll ever see again in my lifetime. So I'm quite excited that this could potentially really unfold and, um, certainly is before us as the Commissioners' Court in Potter County. Bobby, I'm not sure if you want to add anything to that because I certainly don't want to speak for the scope of, of the project.
I don't think I could follow that.
Judge, just in terms of a logistical item, I did meet with our county auditor, uh, in prep for this item, as we all do, and said, what are we missing? Is this good, bad? What are we forgetting? And so I, I certainly don't want to speak for you either, Carrie, but I've got a green light that this, it looks fine. So I wanted to share that with the court.
When, when is gonna be our investment?
I, I think based on that model, again, you know, I'm always cautious saying the model. I believe we received a hundred million dollars worth of investment in an increment that was captured over thirty years. That represents from the county about eighteen million dollars, um, is what, what I would expect off that. And again, we get two hundred million dollars, it's twice that, but that would be outstanding if we get that type of development. If we get less development, that'd be less of a, of a commitment. Based off that model, a hundred million dollars investment is about eighteen million dollars worth of investment. And again, it's about ten million coming from the city and then others will become, you have a taxing entities.
It'll be over the increase of what is slated.
That's correct. The base tax revenue coming off that forty-three million dollars, of course, will continue to flow through to, to the, into the other taxing entities as well. Yes, that's right.
And we do have the authority to do less than a hundred percent, but it's up to us.
Yes, that, that, that is correct. And, and of course, all the sales tax and hotel occupancy taxes generally, unless we'll continue to flow through the taxing entities as well as, as it currently does.
I am excited about this. I think it's a really good thing for that part of town. Um, it's interesting, great, I see. I think it was, I think it's really good step forward for the county and the city.
All of that with a motion. I make a motion to approve tiers number two, East Gateway Tiers at a hundred percent for thirty years.
I appreciate it very much. Thank, thank you, um, Commissioners' Court. And I also want to thank the county attorney for just giving us the language we needed as we get on proceed from this. Thank you all very much.
Judges, Commissioners, thank you very much. Great partnership here. Thank you.
It is. Thank you, sir, for your vision. Okay, number eight, to district and county clerk software to consider and approve an amendment to power technologies contract to work from annual to quarterly billing for maintenance and support services. Who wants to speak to this? Anybody?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So the district and county clerks are currently transitioning over into Tyler's policy product. And their maintenance and service agreement is due. And we would like to amend the contract to pay it quarterly. And in an effort just to hold Tyler technologies a little bit more accountable as we go through this process.
That's the only change is?
That's the only major.
Carrie, we want to have a timing issue. That was my only question, a timing issue for this type of payment or schedule change.
No, but actually this first year maintenance was included in budget for purchase.
Okay. And Jason, here goes.
Move we approve the amendment to the contract with Tyler Technologies.
Second.
Number nine, fire department equipment contract to consider and approve an exchange program agreement with Avon Protection Services for provision maintenance and compliance of the fire fighting improvements.
Good morning. How are you all? Yes. I didn't think about coming up with a ding dong joke, but I guess I can. Towards the end of September, um, Avon bought, we use ISI as what we refer to them as for our SCBA's, our breathing air apparatus, for when we fight structural fires, car fires, trash fires, other things, other places that we're worried about the air that we're breathing and what's in it. Uh, Avon has bought them several years ago. We were approached by them in the latter part of September with an offer that I kind of looked at as a lease purchase agreement, wherein they will provide us all new equipment and they will provide all the service and the annual certification of all the equipment that goes with it. Right now, um, the total cost, and then we have, currently have sixty-four, uh, pieces of SCBA equipment. We're going to trade them nineteen. We have, our equipment ranges over several generations of their, of their airbags. The older generations were all similar in operation. It wasn't a big training issue for us. There were differences in improvements, but not major. The newest version that they've come out with, because of NMPA guidelines and changes, have made some more major changes to them. And there's a little difference in the operation. It's, we like them, we plan to keep on using them. But, uh, it is making a little more training problem for us as we're gonna go forward through the years to do this. What this allows us to do is to get all new equipment at one time and take care of our maintenance and everything else with it. Uh, we were a little, we are a little skeptical with our department over warranty work because we found generally that warranty means that when it breaks, we'll both have it. Um, their contract on this is pretty solid. What they say in the contract that they're gonna take care of, about the only thing they exclude is if somebody purposely breaks a piece of equipment or if we get it chemically damaged. About the only way we should get one chemically damaged is if we're working a hazmat. And usually in that case, almost always in that case, somebody else is responsible for paying for damages that we incur out of that operation. So we feel real good about this, this offer they've made to us. We looked at the cost. The cost for the first year is seventy-eight thousand dollars roughly, plus a thirty-seven thousand dollar, uh, down payment. And then it's seventy-eight thousand dollars a year for the first five years. And then sixteen, seventeen thousand dollars a year for the five years after that, if we go for the whole contract. At the end of the time, we own the equipment. Uh, we're seeing about a fifteen-year life expectancy out of this equipment. So that means we should get five more years to be able to continue to use what we've gone through the first time. This year, uh, in our budget, we have forty thousand dollars to buy new, uh, bottles for our SCBA's. That will be put against this, uh, proposal if we do it. We have twenty-five thousand dollars in our SCBA account that takes care of testing, uh, service and then our testing and service on our compressors. All comes out of that account. So what we're proposing is to take twenty thousand dollars of that and put it against this agreement. That with the trade-in that they're giving us means that for right now, we need thirty-one thousand dollars, a little more, uh, to be able to start the first year of this operation.
Where are you proposing that account come from?
We talked to Carrie about this before we ever started.
And I'll do that.
We got, we got hit with this well after budget. We didn't know they were doing anything about it. It is a beta program that they're doing. It's the way they've raised it to us. And it's not a spot I like to be all the time, but we are getting ready to be the first, if we do this, we're gonna be the first ones in the program. One of the things we questioned in a conference call that we had with them, I said, this is starting. What if it turns out you don't like this? And their response was, we are contracted to tell you we're going to do this for the next five or ten years at our option.
So this company's been in business, do you have any background on the company?
No. Avon ISI, I know it's been around, we've been using ISI equipment for twenty, twenty-five years. We've had their airbags. Avon bought them, they're a larger company, but I don't know how long they've been in existence. Many, many years. They're not related to the other Avon, I do know that because we asked them once. We've had, we have had no issues with them. We have had issues, we kind of feel like part of the reason that they might have come to us is, number one, they said they were looking for departments that are too large. Looking for some small departments and some medium. medium-sized apartments. We've fallen into the medium-sized. Their equipment in the past, we have had problems with. They'll issue a new version of an air pack. We usually end up looking fairly soon on. And we've had various problems with them over the years. They have been very good about fixing the problems and they know that we're not hesitant to let them know quite adamantly when we've got problems with what they're putting out. They take care of their problems. They've got a good reputation with that for us. One version of their air packs has a problem with the batteries. They have batteries in them and the batteries don't last anywhere near what they said they would. Their solution to it is every quarter, we get a case of batteries from them that they send us. So the battery problem where we were replacing quite regularly and they took care of that expense for us. So we are happy with the way that they take care of what goes on.
So I'm doing just a little kind of looking here on their website. They also offer law enforcement. And I don't know sure if you have an opinion on this company. Maybe you don't know anything about them. Okay.
Does it say how long they've been?
No, I haven't seen anything, which makes me nervous. It's not on there.
They bought ISI several years ago. They've been, it was a transition in the name. They were ISI Avon for a while and now they've gone to being just pure, and then it was Avon ISI and now it's just going to be the straight Avon.
So the only drawback that I see have is that right now, this year's budget, you have, how much money do you have for this, there are forty?
We're actually putting in sixty thousand, sixty thousand dollars out of our current budget money. We're going against that seventy-eight.
But every year afterward, you have to increase your budget in that to cover this?
Yes, ma'am. Now, next year, we know that we're going to have to come back for forty thousand dollars for where, for the other half of the bottles that are expiring next year. We also have that same twenty thousand dollars that we're going to put in that will not be in our budget anymore. And that twenty thousand dollars, if it didn't have to increase, applies all the way through the end of the contract. So in effect, I think that makes next year be eighteen thousand. And after that, it takes it down to fifty-eight for the first five. And then it's actually four thousand back, but for the last five.
And are they partnering with other counties? I mean, I would agree with your hesitancy about needing a beta and being the first. I mean, in an ideal world, you know, if they had a few other counties under their belt and we had the ability to look back and see how this really works from a financial point of view, that would be ideal. But I don't know if, I mean, are you feeling a need to do this now or are you thinking, let's think about it?
The only thing that puts us in any kind of situation right now is we have to do annual testing on our SCBA's. That annual testing was due by the end of October and we have, that's about probably nine thousand, ten thousand dollars worth of our budget goes to that. If we do this, we don't need to do that. And so if we're going to be able to execute this now, then we avoid that expense.
And where did you mention the thirty-one thousand coming from? You mentioned it, but I don't know.
It comes from, I believe, areas of capital or...
You can take it from the contingency. It's all placed in the general fund for capital projects. There is a little bit unallocated in that fund.
How did the contact come about? Did you contact the company or they?
No, sir. Our local company, we deal through VanHill Breathing Air Services is the dealer, distributor, whatever, for them here that we do business with all the time. He told us about it. We said, sure, we'll look at it. And their sales guy came in and talked to us one day and made a presentation to us on it. I had no idea that they were doing this.
So is this a better product in your opinion? It's a better product?
It's the same product. As we have, we have to start replacing this equipment. It's a lot of its old. It's the same thing that we provide to replace it with.
But you just go replace them all at the same time?
We need to replace them all at the same time. It spreads that cost out over a few years. Carrie looked at it and she agrees with what their paperwork said. There is a slight savings for the county on it. The advantage to us is instead of replacing four or eight a year on it, so we replace any district, probably is what we try to do, something along that line. Instead of doing that to where we've got two different kinds of SCBA's, basic SCBA's out there that we have to train everybody on, when we do this, we'll still just have one. So if we get everybody retrained, it'll work very smoothly for them.
Carrie, what's your opinion? It's very new, new thinking.
Well, that's, as I said, third is long-term, a slight financial hedge to do in it. It does smooth out the budget. It's still happened with a few years. A high budget can actually replace the potential, it makes it a lower budget. But your point about, you know, being in business, I don't know how long it is a concern.
I believe they've been, I believe Avon's been in business a very long time. I'm just not sure.
Do you mind if you... He has a review on this. He left us a, he found a review.
Oh, they've only been in business since eighteen eighty-five.
Eighteen eighty-five?
Eighteen eighty-five.
Probably not for three years.
I was like, I think it's actually what the world needs.
They bought, they bought ISI in two thousand and five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't have a question, but I mean, what are you thinking, county like? Contingency, that we, we have money in there.
Contingency. I know that we approved the exchange program agreement with Avon for the services, thirty-one thousand.
Exactly.
Exact figure.
Thirty-one, six, thirteen, thirty.
They have a motion in a second. All in favor, raise your hand.
We think it was posted, since it's new.
Yes, ma'am. I will. They told us it'll be four to five weeks, maybe six weeks to get new equipment.
Just a quick agenda I have to keep this, because that's very new.
Sure will. Thank you.
Okay. Number ten, resolutions for key legislative issues to consider and act upon three key issues that were addressed by the Texas legislature during the twenty-seventeen sessions, which is church.
Okay, let me just give you a little background on this, attended the Texas Judges and Commissioners Association meeting at Yalston the first of October. And, of course, our association's legal counsel is General, and he's also our lobbyist to the legislature. And these are three resolutions that he had brought to everyone and wanted us to consider passing them and then sending them on to our legislators as well as the governor and speaker of the house, Lieutenant Governor, and himself as well. So at that time, of the two hundred and fifty-four counties that we have here, in Texas, only sixty have responded. And so he encouraged us, if we could bring it back and see if we could support our county issues. The three issues are state funding for indigent criminal defense. The second one was opposition to appraisal caps and revenue caps. And the third one is opposition to unfunded mandates. Just a short discussion on each one of those before we start making any kind of decisions. On these indigent funds, you've got a, some backup information, and it shows where the, how the expenses for indigent criminal defense has gone up. The Defense Act, excuse me, the Fair Defense Act in oh-one established that the state would help pay for them. And their contributions since oh-two, they started out paying towards this throughout the state, seven point three million. Last year, they paid, or they contributed twenty-eight point six million, while the counties have contributed two hundred and nine million dollars. So what this resolution or what the legislation is asking is that the state pitch in more of that contribution. So that's what that first one is. The opposition to appraisal caps and revenue caps, there's a movement by the Senator from Houston and Lieutenant Governor to cap appraisals and revenue. We already have a cap at eight percent of the effective tax rate. And what that means is if we go over eight, over eight percent, then there can be an election to, to make this go back to last year's. What they want to do is drop it to four or five percent. And so this, this opposition is to tell them that, you know, we are facing many expenses that the legislature has passed down on us. And they can help us by not passing this, but by relieving some of those expenses that they've passed to the county. So anyway, it's opposition to that appraisal cap and the revenue caps. And we had a legislative panel and some of the folks on there thought it'd probably get out of sin, but we're hopeful that maybe the house will stop it. Anyway, we need to let people know what our feeling is on that. And I see where the city just passed a similar resolution to oppose that tax, or that cap. And then the final one is opposition to unfunded mandates. And we've talked about this every year at every meeting we've ever gone to as a county commissioner, county judge. And so this, this whole resolution just is saying, we would like you to take over those unfunded mandates, but don't give us any more. And it's also asking to have a constitutional amendment to take up the people to vote whether or not to eliminate unfunded mandates from the state. So those were the three resolutions. I didn't want to read them all word for word. You've had it in front of you. And I would move that we approve the three resolutions as presented. So.
Any discussion?
Thank you for very good. I appreciate that. Okay, we have a motion in a second. In favor, raise your hand. Go to the board.
All the signings, give them to the people who have the power to do it. Number eleven, downtown parking control to provide a parking control automation update to be able to interlocal parking cars between, although there are no cars in my environment.
So I have a quick presentation. And Brandon, if you'll just kind of roll through, I'm interested in maybe page ten, eleven, and those kind of things. I just wanted to give you a quick update because we do have an interlocal agreement with the city of Amarillo and the LGC being that umbrella. So the project is moving along. They're at now fifty percent completion. So one of the things you'll start to see on our payables, once we get documentation of that, is that second wave of the payment coming through. So that's just a small logistical item. But Mike attended a meeting with me, and what we wanted to do was commit to you as a commissioners' court that as we have these meetings and these updates, that we bring this back to you so you know some items up for discussion. But maybe if you'll, Brandon, if you'll stop maybe on page ten for me, if you don't mind. So one of the things that the city is looking at is what is the vendor, who is the vendor that they are going to be using? They're down to the final two. I confirmed with Mr. Cal this morning that this is okay to share. This is who they will, and they already recommended as the vendor. But they're doing a lot of, I might call it technology infrastructure reviews. And this was actually a recommendation of Les Simpson at the LGC meeting and said, should someone let Potter County see this? And they have a hundred and fifty spots and they've paid into this. So just in case they have input, what would that be? And make sure we're prepping for that. So certainly, we, and I am not the expert, and I asked Mike to attend, and he did. And so they shared with us a couple of items that they have projected of what's the equipment that will go in. To be very clear, this is not the vendor or the process of who's going to operate it. This is just the infrastructure of what's going to go in. I had a lot of questions about real-time access, whether it was on someone's cell phone so they could see there's three spots on floor two or five spots on floor four. We had a lot of discussion about Potter County and how would our spots be designated? Because we paid for them, I want to say from eight to five, don't quote me on that time, but I think we paid, the formula is based on hours, not the whole day, because we only need it during the work day. So we had an interest to make sure what that equipment was like. We talked a little bit about a barcode of some type. And so one of the things we as a commissioners' court will at some point have to decide, how do we want to use those hundred and fifty spots? Is that for employees to park there so that we have frontline parking ready for those doing business at the county? Or are we saying to the citizens to use those parking spots? So there's some operational things we have to talk through. But the good news that I heard at this meeting is there is, I'll call it like a key card. I know that's not what it is, but a key card of some type that the city has the ability to print and that those can be Potter County's. So I'm not expecting that we have to go buy something to print it so that we know which spots are ours. But this is still very early discussions. Mike attended. Mike, if there's something you'd like to add as a result to that meeting?
I think one of the interesting things was for the jurors, the validation that they would have the jurors or any contractor, through this system, the juror will go pick up their ticket. They will take it to the district clerk. They will validate that they were actually here for jury duty towards not abused. They will take the ticket back and leave it. It was a very critical element. My commissioner of DSA on the HID, that's a card reader for the employees that the employees could utilize to get in and out the gate. And then the RFID was actually a little bigger bid system. Contractors, they would utilize this. Anytime they had an event or after business hours, they would have the actual drawing staff. People would be working out into the streets. They had the capability to, where you enter into this parking garage, they would become excellent to get people out of the complex a lot better. So city's done a lot of good work in researching this.
One of the items that caught my attention at that meeting, Mike, too, is the ability for a monitor. So let's say Brandon's checking out of the parking garage and his debit card isn't working or he has a problem. Someone is on calls, they're already kind of thinking through these operational things. And you have the ability to, you know, click help and someone, like a face, would open the other end and say, can I help you? You know, what happened? That kind of thing. So some of these are still not a hundred percent locked in. There are some add-on features. One of the items that I will be asking the LGC to look at is a marketing opportunity to sell some of this. Let's say there's burgers two for one down the street. They could sell that to generate new revenue to pay for some of these add-on technology features. I remember when we started this conversation at the LGC, the underlying goal was this would be the parking garage of the future. So no big surprise, we're looking for true technology to really make it that. And Bob, I just noticed you're still in the audience. Would you like to add anything to that?
Nope, thank you.
Okay. So this is just a quick update. And instead of, you know, us forming another committee, if everybody's okay, as Mike and I keep meeting with them, we'll bring this back to the commissioners to keep everyone in the loop.
Caroline, I have one question for you. On any given day, how many jurors do you summon?
We summon about six hundred.
Six hundred?
Uh-huh. We probably don't have, probably the most we've ever had, part two, twenty-five. So that parking garage just won't even, won't even accommodate them. But that's on Monday. That's, we'll see.
And we still have, you know, the district court's property judge. And when we, when we passed this, this was still with the sheriff's admin where it currently is. So when that project finishes, that will free up a lot of that parking, like that need, I guess, that employee need won't be there to park anymore too. So more to come, but we just wanted to make sure the court was informed.
Okay. Thank you.
Number twelve, AT memorandum of understanding to consider and act upon the memorandum of understanding between Texas A&M and Marilla and Potter County AT for AT services.
memorandum of understanding between Texas A&amp;M and Magrile and Potter County IT services.
Now, this is just a renewal. This is just a renewal of our IT service agreement between us.
Just a renewal. You waited all that time, just to renew.
Just to renew.
I'm sorry.
That means two years. I apologize, it kind of slipped through our fingers.
We just request a signature, Judge. I need them. Thank you.
I make a motion to. Make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between Texas A&amp;M and Magrile and Potter County for IT services.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, ready to move.
Four, zero, thank you.
For Brandon, I'll hand him the one. My own copy.
Number thirteen, neighborhood planning committee to provide an update on the city county neighborhood.
This will be very quick, Judge. I didn't actually have this originally slated for an update, but I was watching the city meeting online, so that's out there in case anybody likes to go listen to the meetings that aren't ours. But this came up as a result of our neighborhood project with the North Heights. And so I thought this was a good way to just bring this back to the commissioners' court. There is a pack in your pocket, is this North Hughes pedestrian crossing. So the short version of it is that this group has been meeting in the North Heights and this neighborhood initiative is kind of the pioneer for that. That's Potter County participating, the city. So now this group has been meeting for well over a year, almost a year now. They have their final meeting next Monday at five-thirty where the project, the whole scope, the development plan will be unveiled at that meeting. But this, I thought, was kind of just a quick, interesting thing to share with the court. Because one of the items that was discovered at that meeting was some crosswalk signage and some pedestrian traffic and how to make sure that people are safe as they're crossing the area. So I thought it was something we don't traditionally talk about. We talk about alleys and lines and sidewalks and development. I know I don't necessarily just think of the crossing initiative. So the long and short of this is that this will, there was discussion at the city that this might come from our funds because we participated in this. But I think the city has landed that it will come from their red light camera funds. So this will not actually come from us. But I think the important takeaway is that this whole committee is what kind of spurred that dialogue. There's additional visibility and additional dialogue added to that. So I thought it was something different that we don't necessarily think comes out of these meetings. And Bob, that's my update on, do you have anything to add?
No, the important thing is the Monday evening meeting as well where the neighborhood kind of concludes that work, so thank you.
Five-thirty, and what's the location for the?
It's back at the cultural center.
Number fourteen, court agenda items to consider and act upon update process due to sensitive agenda items.
I'll be quick on this as well, Judge. And Shannon, you may, maybe you should come talk. I'm glad you're up here. This is just an item for just quick discussion. We don't have to take action on this today, but how the idea came up, I, I learned from one of our city council members that when they publish their agenda, they actually publish all the backup that goes with it too. So no big surprise, there's lots of paper even just here on our table. I'm not advocating that we get rid of our packets because I know that you've got to take them and work through them throughout the weekend and prep and all that. So I'm not advocating for this. The only item that I'm suggesting, I know that it's very helpful on the city side to get all the backup that goes with it. And I would imagine as we increase our transparency efforts, if we have an ability to include the backup with our agenda online, we have to work through that a little bit logistically with IT and with Shannon. But I heard she was excited about it, so that made me excited about it. Is that a fair statement?
That's fair. Yeah, I, I don't mind. I think, I'm assuming we just scan everything together and it goes on the website. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, that, that's it. And then we, I know that there's several department heads in here that actually get a packet. And if you would still request that you want to pack it for whatever reason that be, I think we're still willing to do that. But if there's some that say, send it to me online, it'll be online, then that's fine too. So that, and we just thought, we almost just did it. And good thing Judge Tanner kept me on here. She said, we probably need to bring this to commissioners' court, just to know that it's an idea. And again, the idea with those in the public that do go online to create the agendas and are trying to follow what happens, that's really the original intent. Is there any concern about that?
We're not used to it.
As long as we don't have to print for it.
Yeah.
We already.
I think it would be less.
Endanger a lot of trees.
And we killed a couple of trees today, for sure.
Would you be okay with something like that, do you think? So we can take that as a to-do and, you know, bring that back to the court so everyone has a word.
I don't mind. I don't mind today.
Do we need action? I don't know if we need action, Pat.
If you're going to implement it as formal policy for how things are submitted, yes.
And it does tend to consider that.
Court, exactly.
Well, then let us take, Judge, let us take an initial step at what that policy might look like.
Pass it, bring it back.
Yeah, just so we can draft a policy. It'll probably be a couple of paragraphs.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be, but any kind of, the court has jurisdictions to determine its own policy. And procedure, this is really more procedure than policy. And so, but the court does have to act as a body.
Okay, so we'll all do each other.
All right, number fifteen, Potter County projects, Mike.
Just a few items, the sheriff's Department Law Enforcement projects, bids have been received. We've been currently evaluating them. We have a meeting this afternoon with architectses. That would be Kerry, Vicki, Matt, myself, and John and Kiel. We've each had a section that we reviewed on each bid that has come through. We will give our report on each other today in order to present it to the committee that's coming Thursday for a recommendation to come to commissioners' court on the twentieth. And we'll bring the general contractor to the court. Road and Bridge, the environmental project, we have a pre-construction meeting tomorrow. This is on the old precinct building that's out there in order to get it cleaned up. Hopefully we'll have it done within the next two or three weeks. The Santa Fe Elevator Mod Project are currently on the last elevator right now. They are anticipating to be completed December fifteenth. I actually believe they can work it in January before they do a turnkey on that.
And they're in liquidated?
They're in currently, starting November second, liquidated damages. Vicki won't even go back through that contract. I know it was in there about a hundred dollars a day. Be prepared to get a letter to them whenever the final payment comes in. They had sent the last payout being, I rejected it, they go aside a hundred percent on the project and just now start carving the floor. So I told them about last Wednesday, just waiting to finish the project, anything here there. Then sent one final invoice. So we'll need to take that into consideration before we approve. Tammy, have you think of your mark station? We started the we had our pre-construction meeting on Wednesday after the last commissioners' court was approved. Actually, they started working on it on Friday of that week. It's proceeding very well. They've got all, they've done all the demolition. The HBAC units are all in and the ducting is running, just tied up to the ceiling right now, waiting on the walls and everything to be built. They've got most of the framing done, quite a bit, and they've started the sheet rock and the electrical plumbing is coming along real well also. It's proceeding well and we're talking about completion being January second.
Do you have before and after pictures? Be pleased to have for our text.
We are taking pictures every day. Thank you.
I just want to do a little quick shout out to Nick and I and thank them for what they did to the ground across the street of District Court. And that was in really, really bad shape. We had a near lawsuit just at hand. And we had an attorney call saying, I've had three people who said they're going to sue you if you don't fix that. So I, and I met Nick, faced it in one weekend and all of a sudden they say.
Nick deserves a credit. That was a pretty quick job to have me down.
It was two days.
It was, it was in such bad shape that I have two fairly good legs and I can barely go up it. So this is a guy in a wheelchair trying to get up it and he, he had a hard, hard time. Get in the building and you had somebody helping. Called Shannon and complained to her. And so then the attorney called and said, well, I'm not going to sue you this time, but I'll go the next time. So we took action and I'm thinking.
Really need to look at some of the other areas around the building.
Okay, employment items, salvage maintenance, the resignation of Jason Red Darland as mechanic technician on November fifteenth, twenty sixteen. Number seventeen, the jail report, oh, sorry, I have to go to the. I have a motion to approve the employment items as presented.
Second.
I have a motion, second, all in favor. Zero, thank you.
Number seventeen, the jail report, we have five hundred and seventy individuals in our jail today. Ninety-four of those are female. We don't have any children. And the ratio of felons is eighty-one percent to twelve percent, Mr. Nurse. County insurance, I'll do everything I can. Little section session.
Agenda items for next time. Judge, just the playground agreement that we talked about. And then we're also expecting an agenda item, parking lots, our playground parking lots. So Judge Tanner and I and Scott have been involved with some discussions with PISD and we want to get everybody involved on what is printed on the table. So that, we'll expect that next time.
I just have one question for Sebastian. Wildon Hills Bridge, do you know when it's going to open?
No, they're behind the gate as far as I know.
They're not there.
The faces on the side and stuff, I went there and looked at it. It looks real nice for a lot of.
I went out a couple of weeks ago. Really looking strong at least. I wonder when they're going to complete it.
Are the resonants, have you heard?
I was wondering if any of them moved down.
No.
Well, the biggest complainers were, have changed minds. But that's, it just took some time. People really got to thinking about this.
Were they able to move the bridge to, was it the city taking it over? I don't know why Thompson Park is in my mind.
They got it stored.
They have it stored. We're going to put it in a park that's on the side. But it's going to be set up somewhere and it's going to look good.
I'm still surprised the city took it.
Not surprised at all.
You're not? I'm thankful, yeah. No, I think it has a lot of historical significance.
Not in store.
Groundwork, just a step by eye, probably. Our first week, our first meeting in December, we're going to invite the Washington School District Superintendent to come and visit with us about some of the needs that they have out there on the streets. I don't know what we can do, but we all need to be aware of the issues we have out there. And they just made a worse by not passing their school bond election. So there's some real serious issues. Sebastian and Tony and I have not met with them three or so ago. And we asked them to come in and let you all know. So it won't be next meeting, but probably the next one.
Okay. If there's anything else, we are adjourned.